I don't see him. I could start the meeting, I guess. I'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, May 11th to order at 6:01. We have Jeff Young.
Present.
Lawson Wilson.
Present.
Marjorie Buck.
I'm here.
Myself, Mark Good, and we've just been joined by Brett Witham.
Yep, present.
Okay, CEO Jesse Dunbar, and I assume Recording Secretary Jan Sprague, there she is, yes. Applicants and members of the public. Okay, first order of the minute, anybody see any reason to adjust the agenda? Okay, hearing nothing, let's go on to the minutes. They looked okay with me. Anybody see anything they wanted to change? If not, I'll take a motion to approve them.
So moved.
I'm cracking up.
Somebody's breaking up, all right. Do I have a second? Okay, motion to second to approve the minutes of April 27th. All in favor, Jeff Young?
Aye.
Marjorie Buck?
Yes.
Brett Witham?
Aye.
Lawson Wilson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Yeah, my dogs are gonna go crazy here in a minute when my wife gets home, so. Next order is old business, Acadia Wilderness Lodge, request to extend permit by six months. Greg, you wrote us a letter here. You want to explain it again, anyway?
Yeah, certainly. The ordinance, as you read, allows a up to a two-six-months extension. They garnered their approval in May of 2019. They geared up for construction, started clearing when they got into. They did a lot of the ditching and got ready, but some of the products such as American Concrete Products, concrete chambers, their plant shut down. PVC, I don't know if you guys have tried to get building materials, but there was a PVC shortage. They could not get a lot of the materials they needed just to get the groundwork done. And of course, to to get the sites prepped, that was the first thing to go. You know, and I'd say a lot of it was COVID-related. There, on the business end, there was also a number of delays and simply, I think, the ordinance says that we we come to the board to request that extension and we're respectfully asking to do so. We don't, we don't think that they would need the second six-month extension. You know, there are, there are pads in, the leach field's done, electrical's in now. Certainly, though, you know, that the deadline for that substantially complete is is coming up, and so I think our letter says it all, and hopefully that gives you, gives you some insight.
Okay, great. Now, when we approved this project, it was for cabins on posts. And it's my understanding that now we have yurts on concrete slabs, is that correct?
Yeah, you are correct. We, we followed the procedures in the ordinance and requested a review of what was necessary and obtained a permit for what was from the code department for a minor site alteration, which they permitted back in, I think in 121. Seven, excuse me, 730 of last year. So we followed suit, we obtained the permit for it. We didn't think there was an issue with it, and we went through what the procedural chains were at the time.
Okay, so Jesse, you obviously didn't feel that this modification was significant enough to bring it before the board, correct?
That is correct, since it was the same number of units and right about the same square footage of units, there was no significant change to the, that portion of the project.
And these units are in the exact same places on, as the cabins?
Yeah, and, and more specifically, Mark, maintaining that 25-foot buffer and the densification of the buffer is required by the board. So that is, that is correct.
Board, any comments?
I think a site visit should be in order.
To what extent?
Well, I think we should look at, I think, changing from one cabin truck to another and the border issues and buffering are important, significant issues to the neighborhood, and we should take a look at it.
Oh, do we, is that before us? Is there, or is that already addressed by Jesse and been resolved?
You know. I mean, that permit was issued, the appeal period on that has expired. I think that if we're here to request the extension, if a member of Young wants to try to revisit, I guess he could take up a motion to reconsider it sometime. This is an applicant who's gone through a COVID and a construction project. We did the proper procedures for a permit. We have a valid permit. In fact, you know, I would say, but should the board consider us, our building permit is still good for five years after. So there's a problem with the ordinance in that respect that we didn't get an extension, the building permit outlives the site plan ordinance, but you know, it, it's not anything that is not afforded any other applicant, and the ordinance is clear that it's, it's allowed, and there's nothing outstanding on the permits we have.
I'll move to grant the request for an extension.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
A motion to second on the table to grant the request for the extension. Obviously, my dogs are barking, so sorry about that, folks. All in favor, Jeff?
Sorry.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jeff.
I, I just wanted to get clarification on why you felt it wasn't necessary that they come back when the, the structures are completely different than what we approved, and we spent a lot of time on this, approving these, these cabins.
You asking me?
Yes, I am.
Basically, because they were the same size as the original cabins, they just changed the shape of them to circular yurts versus this rectangular cabins.
But what about the interior? I mean, we, we had floor layouts and the others, we had made sure there was no kitchens, we saw the plans for them, we haven't seen any of this.
There's, there's no, there's no kitchens, it's the same as before, just the actual structure has changed to a yurt versus the cabin.
And are they dividing the bedrooms? Are they divided the bathrooms? I, I don't know what, I have not seen yours, I can't vote for something I haven't seen.
I don't think you're voting on the yurts, Jeff. You're voting, you're not, you're not voting on the yurts. As much as you want to be voting on the yurts, you're not. You're voting on whether these people, based on the COVID, have been granted the ability of an extension. That's where the quest is. I don't know if we're trying to force something onto the agenda, which is not in the agenda, and we certainly take exception for that. We've asked for an extension. If you're looking for more, now, I'm gonna say something else. This request occurred during a transition of code departments, and it wasn't just Jesse involved, it was involved in two code offices reviewing it, not just one. And both of them agreed it was not a substantial change. So you could.
Greg, are you telling me that Mr. Larson, this went before Mr. Larson as well?
I think Mr. Larson was involved at the time.
When was this?
It was spring of 2020. 2020. I have to look back. It was last spring.
I don't, it wasn't, it was not made in the box, and frankly, you know, we're, we're not placing another item on the agenda. If you want to reconsider, you can, but I mean, I, I think we're asking for a request of what was there, which is fully permitted. If there's an exception on the sort of the procedural of the, the department, I don't, that's what we're here to discuss.
Jeff, if I can say something here, if we look under Lua Section 8F, it addresses a modification and or amendment to an approved permit. And it does say the CEO, CEO shall be the permitting authority for the modification and or amendment. The CEO will request the advice and concurrence to the planning board if the modification and or amendment raises unusual questions, or if in the CEO's judgment, a public hearing should occur. So apparently Jesse didn't feel this was a significant enough change to bring it before us. Am I speaking, is that your feeling, Jesse, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the table.
I have a discussion that's related to schedule, and I was just, was gonna ask, we're doing a six-month extension on a campground, which will put you after the 2021 season. And I'm not sure if that matters at all, Greg, but do you still expect, you said you anticipate that within that six months, you will complete?
I would say that in talking with Kenya even early today, there's an opportunity that they could start to recoup some of this in August if things go well, so I don't know that we would completely be out of the season.
You're asking for a six-month extension, you might not need all six months of that extension.
That's correct.
You're hoping, okay.
Yep.
Great.
What, what's the timing to, for the request of the first six months? Greg?
What's the timing of it?
Yeah.
Six months?
After it was initially approved, what, what's the time to request an additional six months?
There's no timeframe within it. It says you can approach the board at any time.
No outside limit?
The timeframes are to substantially start within 12 months and be substantially complete within 24 months. And they may request up to two six-months extensions if they have an issue with either of those timeframes.
It's in the ordinance.
Do we define what substantially constitutes?
I believe the paragraph says. Substantially complete and must be operational within 24 months. Substantially complete. Construction shall be considered to be substantially completed when it has been completed to the point where normal functioning use or occupancy can occur without concern for the general health, safety, and welfare of the occupant and the general public. It should also include permanent stabilization or revegetation of areas of the site that were disturbed during construction.
Has that been done?
No, that's why we're not substantially complete. That's why the leach field is done, the concrete pads are in, electrical's in. We need to commence with the, the landscaping and, and wrapping up. That, that's what's being needed in that six-months period. We are not substantially complete. That is why we're requesting an extension.
Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. We have a motion on the table to grant the six-month extension to Academy Wilderness Lodge. All in favor, Jeff?
No.
Brett?
Yes.
Marjorie?
I can't say anything.
Because?
I'm in a butter.
You're not in a butter to this campground.
Oh, then, yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Order one.
Yep.
Yeah, Marjorie, yeah. You're in a butter to the other Acadia Wilderness Lodge campground, but not to this Acadia Wilderness Lodge campground.
Okay. That's clear.
Okay, yeah. Okay, moving, oh, I, I have a question, Greg. Did, did you guys ever get the state license approval?
State license approval for?
The campground.
Working on it right now. Working on that to become operational.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We're gonna go to new business, planning board application, site plan review, Silk Cove Auto Museum repaving and new paving, more than 2,500 square feet. And I think we have Tim Weiss here, who's representing the auto museum. Hi, Tim.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing fine. Want to tell us about your project briefly?
Sure, we had, we have maintained a dirt parking lot for a number of years, I believe about 20. And the dust level in that parking lot and the ability to actually park and drive our cars across that lotter. It's, it doesn't work for us, it's dangerous for our cars and for any of the car shows that we have there, so we decided to pave it this year. It is above 2,500 square feet. It's roughly in the, in the 5,000 square foot. Actually, I'm sorry about that. It is roughly 4,000 additional square feet to pave that dirt lot and to do some modifications to the existing paving. So we're seeking your permission to be able to move forward with, forward with this project.
Is it dirt or is it gravel now?
It, it is, it is gravel, but it is, it is sandy, so it does kick up dust.
And, and this is what, as I drive up to the museum on the right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, got you.
Yep.
Board, any questions for Mr. Weiss before we go on to the checklist here for site plan review?
Are you increasing the size of the parking area?
Only slightly. We are bringing it to, towards the adjacent road, about eight feet to be able to do parallel parking along that side, but roughly the same footprint as what is gravel now.
And when you say the Jason Road, are you referring to the driveway up to the building or the road or Tremont Road? What road were you referring to?
I don't have the map in front of me because I'm not in the office, but there is a private road to the right-hand side of that parking lot, to the north side.
Oh, which I think you have been indicated on is Old Center Lane?
That's correct, yes.
That's where center comes in. We found that out. Yes. Any other questions?
How, how close to Center Lane are you? Will the edge of your parking lot be? I can't quite read it.
I believe that that measurement is 18 feet.
Okay. Will there be any buffering in that 18 feet?
We are not removing the existing buffering that's there now.
So it's basically the same as it is, you're just gonna put some hot top over a dirt or gravel park, dirt gravel parking lot.
That's, that's exactly what, what our plan is. And with, with this project, we will be tearing up the pavement that we have now and repaving to the same footprint with a slight modification in front of the building.
Okay, that's the circle, landscape, circle there, okay.
That's correct, yeah.
I was wondering about that. I didn't remember that being there, so.
Yeah, and in the center of that, that's gonna be reclaimed to, to lawn there.
Okay. Okay, let's go through the checklist unless somebody else has a question. And we don't need to vote on each one. I'll go through it. Anybody has any questions or concerns, please speak up, and we'll take a, a vote at the end as we get through the checklist here. First, a fully executed and signed copy of the application for site plan review. I saw that. We also, okay with that. Fine, evidence of payment of the application, so that as well, here's the receipt in the packet. One original and nine copies of written materials plus one original and nine sets of maps. The maps or drawings must be at a scale sufficient to allow review of items listed under approval standards, but in no case greater than one inch equals 100 feet. Jesse said we have all those copies. And we do have the scale, right?
Yeah, it was one inch equals 50, I think.
Looks like the, well, the survey that I'm looking at is one inch equals 80.
Which one are you looking at, Lawson? Sorry.
Looking at an 11 by 17, which obviously can't see if I hold it up, but there was in our packet, that's called the boundary survey.
Yep.
And, I mean, it's called a boundary survey, which is great, and so it serves that purpose. It also looks like there's some information about the new driveway on it, though. It's not to mention on there, there are some other zoomed-in versions that are a little bit easier to read.
Yeah, this is, yeah, the zoomed-in one in your packet, yeah.
And what's the scale on that, Lawson?
The scale on this big one is one foot equals 80. Sorry, one inch equals 80 feet.
Okay, so we're within the, yeah.
I think we're, yep, I think we're good.
Okay, great. The owner's name, address, and phone number, applicant's name, address, and phone number. Good applicant's name, business name, owner's name, phone numbers. We're all set there. Location of all required building setbacks, yards, and buffers. It's on the boundary survey. We okay there, folks?
I'm not sure I've found the buffer yet. And maybe it's there, but I haven't got it yet.
Mr. Weiss, can you point that out? There.
Um, hmm.
This, I guess the setback is what we're talking about, the setback.
I would have to pull that up and, and share that with you via Zoom, is that possible?
It's been done before.
Again, for just a moment.
Jesse, you might have to give him permission to share a screen.
Hang on, I'm just pulling that up.
Just to clarify, it's the building setback that's listed on the boundary survey. And some black text that's going sideways compared to the rest of the text with the arrows.
Confused as to which one is actually the boundary survey here.
The large one, the 11 by 17.
Do have a copy of that in front of me, and I'm just expanding that right now.
Okay.
That gives us the existing setback, but if we're looking at paragraph 8.2.b, I'm not sure that it tells us what the required setbacks are. Yards and buffers.
Just opening it now.
Jesse, do you know, right off, what is the setback supposed to be for a parking lot?
Six.
All right, I'm gonna set this to share right now, so you could see if this is what you need.
I think that's what we've been looking at.
That's what we've been looking at, and do you know, it, the print we have isn't super high quality, but if you zoom in, can you, do you know if it identifies what the setbacks are?
Believe that it does. Let me, let me zoom into this and.
Can't even read some of that small print there.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, so I, I'm inclined to just sort of make a note of this. I don't think this is gonna end up being like a deal breaker, but it's the kind of thing that we might make a note of and say, like, make sure, you know, ask for a, a resubmit or a clarification that shows what the required setbacks are from the property lines.
Tim, when, when are you planning to do this work?
We're not planning to do this until the fall. We had initially hoped to do it before we opened for the season, but we do have a bunch of flexible time to, to work with here, so after November 1st.
So if we would ask you to come back with a little better drawing of the buffering and the setbacks that weren't really delay the project?
No, not at all. I'm, I'm here to make sure that we're completing the checklist and doing what we need to do on our end and making sure that everything's proper, so if, if that's the case, another, another meeting is fine by me, but let's figure out everything that we need now.
Right, right. No, we'll do that, don't worry.
I'm sure.
Or what do you think about that? You wanna say no on that one?
I'd say no, I mean, I feel like so far it seems like the major issue here is gonna be how close to the property line is the new parking lot going, and I just want to make sure that we have a drawing that shows what the, what the setback's supposed to be and where the parking lot is gonna go, and that it's not going within setback, so.
I agree.
Okay, good enough. Let's move on then. Names and addresses of all property owners within 500 feet of any and all property boundaries? I saw the, the list in there. Everybody okay with that one?
Jesse, did you generate this?
Yes.
Yep.
So we're just sort of going on your, we gotta believe you, because I'm, I'm not going out there with my tape measure.
Yep.
Cool.
Well, dark, Lawson, you'll have to hurry.
I'll go open the gate for you.
It looks like from the southern boundary, the Murphy property is all like 400 and some odd feet. Am I reading it correctly?
What's your question, Jeff?
On the southern boundary of the auto museum property, there's like four Murphy lots.
Oh, yeah.
And they all look like 400 and some odd feet in distance. So the next piece overshoot has been noticed?
All the, all the pieces touching it get noticed. And then anybody within five hundred feet.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep, yep.
And so is, is, I guess, is it William Heath? Or Benjamin Atherton? Are those on our list? That's, that, it looks like those are the people south of the Murphys, the Murphy lots.
Well, in a, in a awkward situation, I'm the next property over.
Oh.
I was, I knew you were in the neighborhood. I was wondering about that. Okay.
I, I, I was, I, I, I think I probably should have gotten notice, but I'm willing to waive it if to move this along. I mean, I know what it is, because I've been staring at it. So.
And then technically, I mean, does that make you in a butter, Jeff?
No, not a butter. I'm just within that five hundred foot radius.
His property doesn't touch the museum property.
So a butter is,
Go ahead.
A butter is defined as like contiguous as opposed to just within that radius?
Yeah, common boundary line.
Okay, all right, all right.
So I'm willing to wait notice.
Because you're not in the.
Right, but I just want to make sure that we didn't miss somebody else on the other side.
That's when I look at the tax map. Also, in the same area is the Chris Harper's property. And then I don't know who owns the next house down.
According to the measurement on here, Jeff is five hundred and ninety-seven feet to his closest property line.
Murphy property is only four hundred and some odd feet.
I guess if you go.
That's what I'm struggling with. Looking at the tax map, all the measurements coming across the Murphy properties all in the four hundreds. Yeah.
And those are even at an angle.
Yeah, I know. So makes it slightly less.
Slightly less, yeah.
Yeah. And I say, I don't ha- care. And I'll wave, I'll send a letter or email and said, we waved notice, but I am concerned about the two lots that are right on Tremont Road there.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I think it's because yours goes so far back like his that you catch it at the backside. You catch a hundred feet. But everybody on the front side.
Oh, good.
And then everybody else in the back is touching him or large enough that it's covered. But yes, it looks like it missed your back corner by forty feet or so.
Jesse, are you doing that by hand? Or is that a computer program that tells you who the butters are?
It's a computer program. We use the tax maps and then we do a radius on Google Earth. And the tax maps are imposed on Google Earth.
And then along the back line is the seal, four seals foundation. I don't see them on the mailing list. And they're in a butter.
They may have changed. I think they've changed ownership. Yeah, they're Western wings.
The date of this is twenty sixteen, August twenty sixteen.
Yeah, the rear lot is Western wings.
Did they get notice?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Why don't we just note in minutes that I wave any notice requirement?
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that it's clear that you're the only one who would.
Yeah, that's, I wanted to check that back one too.
Yeah, right. Great.
Okay. Are we happy with that one then? Sounds like it. Thanks to Jeff. Sketch map showing general location of the site within the town based on the tap, tax map. We've got that. We okay?
Yep.
Boundaries of all contiguous properties under total or partial control of the owner or applicant, regardless of whether all or part is being developed. That's on the survey. Tax map and lot number of the parcel or parcels on which the property is located. That's in the application material. Copy of the deed to the property, an option to purchase the property or other document to demonstrate right title or interest. That's included. Name, registration number and seal of the person who prepared the plan if applicable. And in this case, it's not applicable. Evidence of the applicant's technical and financial capability to carry out the project as proposed. There's a letter from Bar Harbor Banking and Trust in there saying they have the financial capability to pave that lot. Zoning, zoning classification. We've got that. It's a rural residential. It's on the application. I believe somewhere here.
Um, it looks like they're listing it as.
Limited residential zone.
Is that what you residential?
Yes, sorry, I corrected it. It's rural residential.
And where did you correct that?
It's corrected on this one, but it must have been caught before it got corrected.
Okay, all right.
On the main master copy.
So in box nine on the cover sheet, it should say rural residential.
Yes.
Okay, okay. The bearings and length of all property lines to be developed and the source of this information. So on the boundary survey. Location and size of any existing septic and well culverts and drains, underground tanks. That's on the survey as well. Supposedly, where's the well?
Right in front of the building.
Okay. Pretty small. It's hard to see. There's someone with bad eyes. Location names and present width of existing streets and rights away within or adjacent to the proposed development. We have that. Location, dimensions and elevations of all existing buildings on the site. It's on the plan. Location. I thought somebody's gonna say something. Okay. The location, dimensions of existing driveways, parking and loading areas, walkways and sidewalks on or immediately adjacent to the site. So on the survey and plan as well. Location of intersecting roads or driveways within two hundred feet of the.
Sorry, Mark.
Yes.
Just want to jump in there. Um, you're saying that it's on the, the location and dimensions are on the survey? And I'm not sure I see the dimensions of the existing, but maybe they're there. I just haven't, I've missed them.
I think they're, perhaps they're there if you use the scale, but they're not written. If you want.
And on, on of the existing driveway, Jesse?
Existing should be on.
Tremont Road, you mean? Yeah.
Existing is on that. On the some blow up.
The one that.
Yeah. That one doesn't have a scale. You're right.
And that one doesn't have a scale. I, I, I guess this, so I think that for here, I would say that this is sort of incomplete. Because again, like, if we're worried about, or if the question is how close is the existing gravel driveway to the site, the property line? We don't have that documented. And so I think that we would want dimensions, location and dimensions of the existing gravel driveway so I can verify that either i- if it is conforming, great, and then we'll, and then we're like, and if it's not conforming, then we should know that now.
Yeah.
Now, for dimensions, it's hard to read. For example, look above the Tremont Road. There's some red numbers in there. I can't read them.
You're looking at the boundary survey?
Boundary survey or those?
Yep. Yeah, I don't know.
Dimensions?
Copy is clearer than the one that you printed for us, but the meets and bounds are essentially illegible. And do, do you have a full scale version of this?
Who, Jesse? You, it's enormous, but I, I can, I can work with it and see, uh, see if I can get you some copies of that.
I'm not sure we need, like, we as individuals need, need legible copies of like knowing exactly what the the meats and the bounds are and the, you know. But, um, but I think that we want to make sure that we have one on file. Did you get a full size copy, Jesse?
I do not have a full size.
I think that we should, I, I think that that's required. And if it's not required, it probably should be required. Yeah, one original. The maps and drawings must be at a sufficient scale, right? So it says that it's one inch equals eighty feet, but the one inch on here, I don't think is actually, I don't think that's eighty. That's a full inch.
So Lawson, you're saying that we should consider eight point three F and eight point three G incomplete at this point?
Eight point three F for sure is incomplete. I think G, I would argue does exist. Then it, the, the, the site plan does identify old center lane and Tremont Road.
Sounds good to me. Anybody could, everybody could cur.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I think it's really just F.
So just F, okay.
We're looking for more.
Let's go on to H, the location of open drainage courses, wetlands, stone walls, graveyards, fences, stand of trees and other important features. Jesse has it shown on plan. Is it really? All this stuff? And was that beyond the boundary survey or?
It looks to me, and Tim, maybe you can clarify this, that there might be, maybe three existing trees along the driveway, and then you're proposing to plant more on either side?
Uh, there's many more than three. I think that those are the major ones that are there.
Okay.
So I can define those clearly. Which section is this? This is eight point?
Um,
H.
H, eight point three dot H.
Eight point three dot, eight point three H. Okay.
And and it's possible that you're drawing. So there's a blow up of, and I'm not quite sure what drawing this is. Oh, yes, you, you drew it. So you just submitted the photocopy that shows like the turnaround area and the parallel parking and the cars and the trees. And maybe those are all existing trees?
There is a stand of trees there. So I believe that that is just a representation that there is a stand of trees, but I can.
Maybe it could even be as simple as just sort of making those notes on this di- you know, the, the, the printout that you printed out just by hand saying like, this is a stand of trees. There are about ten of them or about a hundred of them. And are you proposing any cutting of trees or planting of trees?
Not at all. We actually, when we planned this, we measured to where the existing stand of trees is and defined it as such. So.
I think if you could just make that note on the drawing.
Yep.
That would.
How about open drainage?
The other question has to do with drainage.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
Mine as well.
Pretty big slope driveway and, you know, Jeff and I both live on the same slope.
Oh.
And my driveway, you know, gravel and like runs out every year and it's a total mess.
Yes.
So I guess I just want to make sure that you're have a solution for that. And the solution doesn't involve like all the water rushing right into Tremont Road.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where existing paving is now. Where it is gravel, it is level in that area. So we don't have any washouts because there's no drainage.
Are you repaving the long driveway portion?
We are, but we're doing it to the existing footprint.
Okay.
So we, we are gonna take the old paving out because it was actually less expensive to get rid of the old stuff and and just pave the whole thing new.
Sure.
So.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure where we should address this, but we are going from a gravel lot to a paved lot, which makes it impervious surface, which means water production of needing to dispense of water, whether it's flat or not, it needs, water has to go someplace. And so the gravel area, I don't know, I, I don't know what it's like underneath, but obviously would absorb some. Now we're preventing any absorption at all by a paved lot. So I am concerned. I don't know whether this is appropriate spot to raise that issue or later on.
I, I thought eight point four I, which is stormwater calculations.
I looked at that. I just wasn't sure where we go.
I mean, that's where, that's where I was gonna raise the question. I don't know whether that's right or not.
Jesse, where should we raise this question?
I would say in the stormwater, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and right, because it's also in terms of eight point three is all that existing conditions.
I know.
And so I I think that if we, if we learn about, oh, wait, I guess the other piece of the existing conditions that would be helpful, Tim, would be to know where the gravel area and where the asphalt area is.
Where the separation is between those.
Really probably part of eight point three F, the location and dimensions of driveways. But you could also argue that it's sort of part of open drainage courses. Does the, does the water right now shed off the driveway into ditch on either side of it?
There is an existing drainage ditch. I haven't really thought too much about it because it's not very deep, but it doesn't go beyond there. And we are not actually paving that's kind of nestled in the stand of trees that we didn't want to fill by any means. But.
So I think you should show that. I think you should draw that on the drawing to the best of your ability. And I'm not sure that we need, you know, I don't know if you, I don't, I'm hoping you don't need to hire a civil engineer to figure this out. But we don't know that yet. And we need to have enough information to be able to say, yes, you are thinking adequately about stormwater or no, you're not.
Okay, great.
Tim, is that ditch as you go up to drive up the driveway towards the museum? Is it on the left or right?
So when you go up the driveway to the right is the, the existing gravel lot? It's further to the right. It's right on the edge of that gravel lot there. Against where I'm sure it's holding back flow from old center lane.
So we're gonna want, we're gonna want the open drainage courses to be shown. Correct, folks? Is that my understanding here? Okay. Uh, so where am I?
I do, I do know that when they have big events there, they park, they pull in perpendicular to the road. The extra cars. And so I know the drainage ditch isn't so deep that it can't prevent a car from traveling over it. So it's more of a depression, I would think, than a drainage area.
Again, against Tremont Road, you're, you're saying?
Now, I'm coming up your driveway.
Oh, there is none on either side of the existing driveway now. It's, it's further as soon as you get to the top of the hill. There's the edge of the building. It starts about fifteen feet beyond the edge of the building at the edge of the existing gravel driveway. So I know, I know where you're talking. So I know, I know where you're talking about where they, where they park perpendicular.
I was confused at first, Jeff. I thought he meant along the driveway, but, uh, then he said on the, uh, edge of the building there.
Okay.
Off the edge of the building.
I just flipped to the satellite image that title is titled driveways within two hundred feet. And I think it's a helpful image to see. Yes, the driveways, but also, um, sort of where the existing pavement is and then where the gravel is. And, and it looks like there are three or maybe four cars parked off the pavement right now. Um, and so that's where you're proposing to extend the pavement. Is that right? Yeah. And so I think that's, that's the part that I want to make sure that we're not encroaching on, so. Or, I mean. It's okay to encroach to a point, but I, I want to make sure that we're not going too far.
Sure.
Okay, uh, direction of existing surface water drainage across the site.
That's what you just did.
Oh, did we do that one? Okay, sorry.
Eight point three point.
Went back. No. Jay, okay, location, front view, dimensions and lighting of existing signs. You don't have lighting on the sign.
We do not.
But you do have a sign.
We do have a sign. It is, it is on lit, um. Thought I had included. That on one of the drawings.
But we argue that it's not applicable because it's not part of the.
You could.
Change, I don't know.
No, because it's not lit. It says existing signs.
Right.
Jesse checked that it, uh, uh, no here for us, uh. Tim, did you, did you find where that is or that it's, I didn't see it anywhere.
I wasn't sure if perhaps, do you just have one sign?
We do just have one sign. It's. Yeah, it's, uh. Halfway between the driveway and the. South border along Tremont Road.
Well, that's just, uh, it's not shown on the plan, so that's something that we'll want to have as well.
I made a note of that.
Okay, uh, location, dimensions of any easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. Read through the deed completely.
I glanced at deed. I didn't see any restrictions in it.
No, there's a septic easement on the.
Yeah.
I did see that, yeah. And I do see on one thing, boundary line agreement recommended. Says something we should be concerned about here. It's along, uh, the museum property and, uh, center, old center lane.
You're, you're looking at the twenty sixteen survey?
I'm looking at, uh.
Yeah, it's on that as well.
It's on there as well, okay.
Oh, right. And then there's the photocopy, the, the blown up version, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what it is. Just a pulling up version.
So is that? That's something that I guess Greg Johnson wrote in twenty sixteen presumably. On that survey, is that where that originates or maybe even earlier than that?
Yeah, looks like.
I feel like this came up. For some other project.
Came up, uh, when we discussed specific call.
Right, right.
What do you think, folks? Is that something we're concerned about or not?
Um. Well, I feel like I need to be consistent, which is that, like, that's the property line that I'm most worried about and. And feel like the location of that parking lot and the location of that property line. Uh, are important and that they should be. Uh. You know, the surveyor should be able to identify exactly where that property line is. You're laughing at me because surveyors can't find property lines?
No, uh, just take a walk in the woods and see how many survey stakes there are in one little cluster of surveyors. Down in different places. I have a different suggestion is that if, if, if possible. That we take the most conservative line that affects the property. And use that as a line if it, if it's acceptable to the applicant, that we don't have to worry about if there's a sliver in there that they're arguing about. Just as long as we use the one, if they lost the argument, is our setback still good?
And how do we determine that from the deed itself, the registry or?
I think whoever wrote a survey, uh, suggests boundary line agreement probably is aware of what, what, what the issue is.
And if there had been an agreement reached. That would be in the registry as well, correct? You recorded in the registry or not?
Well, it's not mandatory, but you foolish not to.
So maybe our recommendation should be for the applicant to follow up with the surveyor, in this case, Greg Johnson. And provide the planning board with more information about the. Boundary line agreement recommended, recommended line.
Yeah, it, it's, it, I, I think unless it's really blatant, something really awful, I think it's unfair to ask an applicant to. Try to get a boundary line agreement when he has, and a butter just says no. And it, it shouldn't prevent an applicant going forward and doing what they want with some, they have to risk, we don't. But we do have the responsibility to be sure our setbacks are proper. So that's why I suggested that the, we take the most conservative. Line, if Greg can provide it to us, and if the applicant agrees that use that as the line that, that, uh, we measure our setbacks from.
Also, so do you, Tim?
Yeah, that sounds fine. I'm just making notes here. Um, I, it sounds sensible to me. Um, I'm just noting it so I don't forget the intricacies of that. Uh, but I see exactly what you're going for. So you, you want to verify that your setbacks are valid, no matter what the. Agreement is.
No matter how the dispute resolves.
Right.
And, and just for, uh, procedural or whatever, I think that we should actually use paragraph eight point three dot B. Which is about bearings and length of property lines. As the sort of placeholder for like, that's the paragraph where we want more clarification from the applicant and the surveyor. About the pro- the north property line.
You said those eight point three B?
Yeah, we were talking about it when it was under the deed, but that's when we sort of got to it, but I feel like it's probably more applicable under that paragraph.
Board members?
By my name.
You're in agreement? Does that sound good? Okay, so we're not worried about eight point three K then.
I don't think so.
We're going back to B, eight point three B.
Yeah.
Okay, I, indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality for both normal use of fire protection. It's apparently not applicable. They may want to hose down the driveway occasionally though, but I think we're okay there. Estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal, together with the location and dimensions of all water supply. And wastewater disposal, evidence of their adequacy to, for the proposed use, including soils, test pit data. If onsite sewage disposal was proposed, once again, not applicable. The direction of proposed surface water drainage across the site and from the site. With assessments of impact on downstream properties. Once again, that's very similar to what we're talking about for stormwater. And I noticed Jesse didn't check, give us a, a check there. So we want to mark this one? No?
Yes. Yes, market, no, in my opinion.
Anybody disagree? Okay. Provisions for handling solid waste, including hazardous and special waste and location of proposed screening of any onsite collection of storage facilities. It's not applicable here. Location, dimensions and materials to be used in the construction of proposed driveways, parking and loading areas and walkways. Any changes in traffic flow onto our offsite. Think we have all that information. There's no change in traffic flow, just extra parking.
But I don't think that we have. Dimensions. Or maybe we, oh, I see. Yeah, no, we do have the dimensions of the new. That's in the graph paper drawing.
Yeah.
Okay. Proposed landscaping and buffering. There's none proposed. Going to use all the existing buffering. So that's not applicable. Location, dimensions and ground floor elevations, all proposed buildings or building expansion proposed on site. There's none proposed, so that's not applicable. Location, front view, materials and dimensions of proposed signs, together with method for securing the sign. Once again, we get back to the signs.
Uh, I guess while we're talking about signs, it just seems like that should be like that's not relevant or not, not applicable.
For paving project.
Right. Treat it the same way we're treating. You know, well, water, you know, other stuff.
Makes sense to me. That's what's here. Anybody have, uh, disagree with that? Location, uh, oh, I did that one. Location and type of exterior lighting. There's no new lighting proposed, Tim?
There is not.
Okay, not applicable. Location of all utilities, including fire protection. The overhead power shown on the plan, the well shown on the plan. General description of the proposed user activity. That's on the application. Going to park cars and other vehicles. Estimate of the peak hour daily traffic to be generated by the project. There's no change here. So that's not applicable. Now we go to stormwater calculations, erosion, sedimentation, control measures. And water quality and or phosphorus export management provisions. If the project requires a stormwater permit from the DEP, or if the planning board determines that such information is necessary. Based upon the scale of the project or existing conditions in the vicinity of the project. So as someone said earlier, it's a good point. We're going from. A gravel area, dirt and gravel area to a paved area. So there's going to be more. Runoff. So what, what do we want the applicant to provide here? Jesse, any thoughts? We want an engineering report?
I am concerned that whole property does slope down towards Tremont Road.
And Sealtown Pond.
And Sealtown Pond. And, and so I, I do feel some sort of water control should be looked at. Um, I know, we all know we drive along the number of driveways that can flood the road and ices over in the winter and the. DEP and everyone goes around trying to figure out how solve that new culverts and so forth. I think we need to look at that because we are very, I think. From a layman's point of view, produce more runoff on a hard surface than an absorption surface.
Yeah, I would agree, Jeff, and I feel like either we want the applicant. I, I guess we could do it two ways. We could either, like, we could ask for our own. Uh, review and we could basically call our own engineer and have him or her give us some advice about it. And, or we could ask the applicant to do the same thing. I feel like, but I guess the burden should be on the applicant to provide us with. Sort of compelling enough information to, like, if it's a non-issue, then we should know that it's a non-issue. And so I guess, Tim, it would make sense to call an engineer. It could be just a letter saying like. The engineers looked at this site and determined that stormwater is not an issue for these reasons.
Right.
Yeah, we do have an existing, I, I believe it's serviced by the, um, DOT. Um. A drainage ditch against Tremont Road.
Uh, which goes under the driveway?
And it goes under the driveway, so, um, maybe having second set of eyes, a trained set of eyes on that. To verify that it's sufficient might. Be good. I don't want to drive into, you know, a sheet of ice when I come to work in the morning, so.
Totally, right. I, I guess there's our two issues, one of which is like sheet of ice and the other is making sure that the runoff isn't leaving your property.
Right.
And. I don't think that it will, but we should make a decision based on that. We should make a decision based on an engineer telling us that it won't.
Yeah, let me just, uh, let me just make a note of that, uh, before we go any further, just to make sure that that's concise.
It seems like a small project to ask you to have to go to an engineer, but.
Yeah.
I think there's some real concerns here. Uh, you know, that does slope quite a bit and there's going to be runoff. We just want to make sure that it's controlled properly.
Yeah, I mean, we want to make sure that what's existing there is, is sufficient. If not, then. You know, we, we have to take that step. So, um, no, if, if it's good and an engineer signs off on it. I'll get a report and, uh, get it to you.
All right, yeah, submit it because you're going to have to come back for completing this review again.
Uh, oh, yes.
Because there, there's no way we can, we're going to find this complete tonight, so.
No, that's fine. And we have time, so we're not.
Okay. And, and any, any comments from anybody else on the board? Questions? If not, I'll go to the final one, eight point five approval block. That's not applicable here. So.
Uh, can I just, now the, go back. I didn't mark down what we did with eight four E.
Eight four E?
Yeah, proposed landscaping, buffering.
Eight four E.
I, I think I would mark that as incomplete, um, and, uh, on the grounds that it's unclear. Which, what are the trees are existing versus new? It sort of looks like they're new in one drawing. And so I think that clarifying where there are existing trees. And if there are any trees or buffering between the, the new parking area and to the north new parking area. Draw those so that we can see those, um, that buffering.
So that ties into the eight point three H as well, correct? Stand of trees, make a note.
Yes.
And, and show buffering. And what was the, what was the section of this? Eight point four?
Eight point four E.
E.
And. And maybe it's just as simple as saying you can satisfy eight point four E. Well, okay, you can satisfy the completeness. Which is different from saying that you're satisfying the ordinance's requirements for buffering. But complete this if you said that like. We are, we intend to leave all existing trees where they are. That is our buffering strategy. That would give us enough information to then review and say whether or not.
Sure.
Appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess, uh, next step is I'll take a motion to find this application incomplete. And we should, uh, go through and state the reasons. Who's, uh, who's willing to make that motion there, Lawson?
Um, sure, although, uh, and, and check my work to make sure that I've got.
Yeah, I'm following along.
Paragraphs. So, uh, I move to find this application incomplete, um, citing paragraphs. Eight point two dot B setbacks, eight point three dot B. The bearings and length of property lines. Eight point three dot F, the location and dimensions of existing driveways. Eight point three dot H, the location of open drainage courses and trees. And other important features, but the trees and drainage are the, the piece that we specifically talked about. Eight point three dot J. The locations of signs, and there's a little asterisk there. We had sort of talked about that as incomplete, but then we also circled back saying that maybe that's not applicable. Should we leave that one off as not applicable?
It's easy enough for me to just provide that as well.
All right, it's incomplete.
Yep.
They're on the sign. Um, eight point four dot B. Which is proposed drainage and service water drainage around the site. Eight point four dot E, proposed landscape and buffering. Eight point four dot L. Stormwater. Assessment. And I think that's, that's it.
That's what I have.
Yep.
Do you find anything, have anything different?
Oh, the approval block.
Eight point five.
Eight point five is also incomplete. We do need an approval block. Um. And.
Oh, that's no, I thought it said not applicable.
No, it's incomplete. It's not, it's not on the drawing right now, so there's nowhere for us to sign, which is fine because we're not gonna sign it anyway, but.
Good catch.
So there's, there's my motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, Tim, you, uh, clear about what you need to do?
Been taking notes and, um, the only question that I might have for the board would be resubmission for consideration. Is that now in a fourteen day window or does that remain at twenty one?
Jesse?
I don't think it specifies.
I, I don't need to know the answer to that now. If you want to send me an email later, too, that's.
Yeah. I'll let you know.
All right, thank you, Jesse.
If you have other questions, call Jesse.
Yeah.
He's the man.
Jesse's the man.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Good, good luck.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, next. Site plan review, uh, uh, application for completeness for, uh, Pointy Head Campground. Jeff, are you around here? Jeff Craft?
He was on earlier, I think.
It's Tim. I see his, but he's square, but Jeff?
Says he's unmuted and says his video's on, but I don't see.
Well, Marjorie, you're gonna have to recuse yourself on this one.
Okay.
Well, I had a question for Jeff, but, uh.
Darn, I don't know where I have it. Kevin? That, that. And this. And that's, okay, so that's.
Marjorie, uh, you're unmuted.
Oh, I'm talking to myself, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Ed Bear. I'm a legal counsel to the applicant. Could we just take perhaps a five minute recess and try to find where Mr. Craft might be? I don't want to. If, if you want to try to go through this, I'm gonna need his, you know, there's at least.
Back now?
May have come back.
Jeff? Maybe somebody could call him. One of the, uh, Pointy Head people could call him, Ed, or somebody.
Sure.
You want to, Jesse, you think maybe we should jump ahead to, uh, the CEO issues? Quickly? Take care of that?
Uh, yep, we can just go over that. I was, um, did everybody on the board attend town meeting?
I did. I saw Lawson there.
I was there. My left hand is now warm.
And Marjorie was there. I saw Marjorie as well.
Did you get a little damp?
Yeah, but just the hand that was going out the window.
Yeah, and my card barely made it through the whole meeting.
Hello, sorry to interrupt. Jeff is, uh, he's, um, he's having a problem with his internet. He's, he was listening to us, but he's, he's rebooting right now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so the land use ordinance, um, was approved, the amendments were approved and the campground amendments, that was that separate article, were also approved. The site plan review, we passed over due to the or with the select board holding a public hearing. So we will revisit that, um, probably make some other tweaks to the ordinance as well. Um, and, and look at doing it perhaps on November, if possible. If not, next town meeting. I'll have copies of the new ordinance, land use ordinance. For you once Katie attests it and I'll be sending it up to the DEP for their approval.
Jesse, do they go into effect immediately?
The ordinance, the ordinance goes into effect immediately. Any application that was already received gets reviewed under the prior ordinance. Received prior to adoption.
Okay, great. Jeff, you back with us? He's muted.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I reached him by phone and I think Jesse did as well, or some, somehow he could communicate.
Well, I did. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, Jeff. Thank you.
Hallelujah. I'm gonna hang up on you, Ed.
Yep.
That's good. No, I've been on for an hour and a half and then it was my turn to talk. There was nothing.
Well, I had a question right off, Jeff, before we.
Oh, I can't wait.
Go here, yeah. You know, I see the site plan and some of this other material you submitted. It's just the same stuff you submitted for the last project.
Yes.
The last time you came before us.
Yes.
And then we have this, um, binder. And I mean, how are we supposed to approach this? What, what's what?
Can I answer that?
That's why I asked the question.
Okay, very good. As you know, we came before you over the last year. Is that correct?
Last year, yes.
Yes. And we took it all the way from completeness to compliance. And eighty-four percent of what we submitted complied. And sixteen percent did not in the end after the public hearing. So we had four items that were not in compliance. Basically, the road, stormwater, buffering. And the one that went with stormwater, the pollution down on the ocean. So anything that was in compliance in the past, we have resubmitted. So we have then done another stormwater analysis. We have more information on the road. We have information on buffering. And, uh, and the pollution. So if you go down Jesse's checklist, you will find that we are we should be complete tonight. And, uh, then we'll get on with compliance.
You didn't really answer my question. My question was what's the difference between the application and the binder?
Okay, if that's.
I see, I see differences in them.
I, I, I can answer that as well. We as a group felt that we didn't do a good enough job explaining to you the nature of our project. And the binder is put forward by Floyd Witham, who's in attendance tonight, and I'll introduce him in a moment. And that will help explain the nuances of our project. And how, yes, it falls under the definition of campground, but it's not what you think of in your mind as a campground. So we would like to get into that as fast as we can.
Okay, let me give you an example why I ask these questions. I have a copy of the Pointy Head site plan here.
Yes.
Everything, all the, the camping spots, camping areas are all neatly arranged. And then when I look at it, it in the binder, it, it's, it's totally different. There seem to be random and not matching up with this.
They do match up, but I will say that one was prepared by somebody with an artist mind. And one was prepared by me with an engineering mind. But it will all come out once we go through our discussion.
Board members, any questions for Jeff before we start?
I'll get to go start going through it and, and there'll be questions as we go, but I think it's sort of useful to use the checklist as a framework for identifying the, the points of questions that we have.
Okay.
And, uh, before we get down through the checklist, I'd like to, uh, have the opportunity to introduce my team. I think they've all had to pop up because I wasn't in a, in the call at first, but, uh, I am now and, uh, one new member is Ed Bear. A very esteemed land use attorney. He can describe some of this himself, but he does represent some of the towns on Mount Desert Island and, uh, in some of their, their issues like, uh, planning board. So, uh, he does represent the planning board. The other person that I'd like to introduce is Floyd Witham. No relationship to my knowledge. To somebody that sits on your board. Floyd manages the property for Madeline. Madeline Brogdon. And, uh, he also is a landscape architect here on Mount Desert Island. And he, he designs and he plants. And he was the one that prepared the, uh, the volume for you folks tonight. So perhaps hear something from, from Ed and then I'd like Floyd to be able to explain his presentation that he has for you tonight on the Pointy Head Campground and the plan for Pointy Head. The fact that it's an Airbnb situation. It isn't a drive up campground. It never has been, but, um, I will take the responsibility for not being able to put that forward last time in a clear manner so you can understand it. But I brought in some new team members. Ed Bear and Floyd Witham, and I think they can, uh, enlighten you on, on what our plan is. So, um, Ed, can I turn it over to you to start with and then you can turn it over to Floyd?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. I really don't, I don't have much to, to add at this juncture. If there are questions along the way, I would be happy to try to address them concerning the completeness of our application, although I, I do think not to belabor the point, uh, much further that, um, yep, your, your ordinance treats us as a campground, but truly when you look carefully at what we propose to do, it is, uh, it is more like a, an Airbnb, I guess, or, um, whatever you want to call it. I mean, there, we're not gonna have RVs coming into the property. We're not gonna have people bringing their tents and setting up on various sites. These are all fixed locations with a fixed little structure on each, each of the fifteen spots. Uh, so, uh, we look forward to going through this with you again. My earlier involvement during the appeal process led me to, uh, have conversations with the town officials and with the DEP. And, uh, we straightened out the, uh, road, access road issue. Uh, you have a letter in the application materials from the from the Attorney General saying that what we propose to do with this road is, is acceptable in the commercial fishery zone. So, uh, other than that, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Craft says, uh, redoubled his efforts to demonstrate stormwater runoff, uh, is not a problem. Uh, and we are beefing up our efforts to provide adequate buffering and screening to the issues that we fell down on before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Floyd, could you do a, an introduction of the Airbnb part of it and then come back and, uh, later on, talk about the tent sites? And, uh, the cabin sites?
Yes. Hi, my name is Floyd Witham. Um, basically, uh, I guess in the, in our last application process, uh, we were, we didn't, I clearly get the message across, as Jeff mentioned. We never intended to be a campground, as we all know campground. And the many other questions and concerns that came from neighbors and, and the board members, uh, seemed to constantly refer to people who were actually coming there with a camper, a tent or a, a RV. Uh, or it could just walk in off the street and come there and rent, and none of that was ever in the plan. Uh, everybody has to go through Airbnb to book their reservation with us. We stressed to you before that only two people would be on each site. Uh, that's the rule. That's the only rule that applies. It's Airbnb covers that. A third person cannot show up and, uh, expect that there's going to be accommodations for them. People can't invite extra people. We only take pre-vetted Airbnb members. So a lot of the concerns about the types of people or partying or loud noise or disobeying rules is we're protected by Airbnb and uh, it just doesn't happen because these people will lose their pre-vetted status and travelers through Airbnb are unique and looking for adventures and something different, and that's what we're trying to provide. I'm personally will be managing it along with Madeline and my staff. There's always somebody on duty. It's not, uh, it's just not the kind of description of campground that it seemed like you were asking questions about. I don't, I'll take any questions you want about, uh, anything in the packet that I submitted, uh, but I submitted it basically as an explanation that I, I failed to get across to you even during the site walk. And I pointed out these types of things. Like, I never, I tried to stress that nobody was coming there with a tent. And I think tent platform became a very confusing term to people. But it's a tent that we own, set up as a, a bedroom with some sort of theme. And they sleep there. It's a sleeping accommodation. There's no camping and cooking in, uh, pounding steaks and, uh, you know, like I said, families, there's no children. It's, it's one bed in each unit. So that I, I think was a big miscommunication before, uh, because most of the concerns that came about seemed to relate to that traditional camping, I suppose. So I had hoped by the packet I created was to just get the message across as to what it is, the type of person, the Airbnb. This is not like, uh, of, I, uh, anything but ideas, like, like Jeff mentioned, the artist rendition. It's just to get it across to you. That's all that is. It's not you know, exact science. I tried to, uh, mention distances to things that they're all listed as approximate. It's just, um, So that you understood what we were creating.
At that. Were you done? I'm sorry. I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Jesse, Diane isn't with us tonight?
She is not. She had a scheduling conflict. She'll participate in the future meetings. Requested.
Yep, okay. I know Mr. Pelagi. Had submitted something late. And. I just want to remind everybody that any submissions for this or any other project need to come the Tuesday before the meeting. In or, in order for Jesse to get them in the packet and give us time to review them.
Does anyone have that at the moment?
Have what?
What Mr. Plage submitted?
Submissions. No, because they were submitted late. However, I was going to see if the board wanted to allow him opportunity to speak at some point. To. State his concerns as well. We, we gave the applicant time to make their case.
Mr. Chairman, obviously the board can do as it wishes, but I don't understand the completeness review to be a public hearing. It's for the board and the CEO to confer with the applicants to whether the boxes are checked or they're not. If the applicant, if the opponent wants to challenge the sufficiency of our filings, or he can do that when we have a public hearing. Because obviously if he thinks something's missing, he's going to argue that it's not sufficiently proven. I guess I, I think it's a.
I understand. I, I wasn't trying to open this as a public hearing, Mr.
Well, that's what you're doing.
I was asking the board what they thought.
I have no objection if he wants to speak. I don't believe it makes it a public hearing.
Brett. Sure, yeah. Lawson.
Yeah, I, I, I would be open to, to hearing. I mean, I think that. In terms of sort of process. I guess maybe not, I don't know. Do we want to talk about it first?
Well, that's a, that's a, would be the next question.
Because I feel like there might be some value in the board discussing with the applicant. Before we ask, before we ask for. Other people to sort of shape our conversation, but I don't know. I could argue the other way. It would be great to have all the information before we start discussing it.
So we. We could go through the checklist first. And then allow Mr. Plage to speak briefly. How's that sound? Where do you want him to speak first?
Let's go through the checklist first. That's really what we're supposed to be doing here.
Yep, okay.
Agree.
Okay. First up, a fully executed and signed copy of the application for site plan review. Yes, we have that. Evidence of payment of the application. I saw that in there. As well as the technical review fee. The nine copies of written materials. One original, nine sets of maps. The maps and drawings must be scale sufficient to allow review of items listed under approval standards, but in no case greater than one inch equals 100 feet. And. To me, we have that on the pointy head site plan here. But we don't really have any scale in the drawings in the binder.
Yeah, I would, I think I would mark. Well, yeah, I think I would mark that one as incomplete. And not that we need scale drawings from the binder. I mean, I think the binder is a great sort of reference for the. Feeling of the place and it does convey that adequately. But we don't have drawing, we don't have scaled drawings of the. Structures and so it's, there's nothing for us to review and. Yeah, anyway. I don't think we, I don't know if we have to belabor up each one of them. Maybe we should go, sort of go through and. I don't know, do other.
Hold on, Jeff and Brett, your thoughts on this? This is really why I was asking about the binder. Which has the buffering. Information.
Well, I, I think the structures need to be. Put on the plan specifically and their sizes and so forth. I, I don't see it in there.
And this comes up again when we'll, when we're talking about paragraph eight point three, or sorry, eight point four, we'll get more specific, but I think. So I don't know if we want to mark this one incomplete and the other one's also incomplete, or maybe this one is okay because they did submit some drawings.
Eight point four.
That's all the proposed, proposed activity. Chap, you know, questions about proposed.
Right, right. Oh, D, you mean? No?
Well, I was just saying. Right. Paragraph eight point four dot D. And eight point four dot.
Yeah.
F.
And E probably too.
So we'll get there when we get there, but.
Okay. So do we want to? Say this is okay, or do we want to say it's not? Eight point one C.
Can I be allowed to comment?
Sure, Jeff.
I think you should look at the binder as text. And. There's a lot of text in there and there's a lot of artwork in there. And when the day is done, you're going to see my site plan. And my structural drawings will reflect. What we've submitted. Okay, so you got to take the notebook. As informational. Words, drawings. But drawings, they're very artistic. And they talk about the heights of the structures, et cetera. Those are words. So don't. Miss, be misinformed. By not reading his words. And I think if you do, you'll find that the binder is fine.
Jeff, can you point us to the structural drawings you were, you just referenced?
Structural drawings.
You said the site and structural drawings. I don't see any structural drawings.
Well. I have a site plan that I've submitted.
Yep, I see. I, we have that one.
That shows where everything lays officially. And if you remember last time, we provided platform heights and that went with it. So, w- once you hear his full presentation. If you find that these tent platforms. Are acceptable, then I'll draw them into the, in addition to the structures that have already been drawn. We've had the four foot platforms. The eight foot platforms and they're all on the record. So if he has a, a different platform. And you don't understand the dimensions of his sketch, I will formally draw it into the, into the plan.
This is not a pre-conference, though. This is an application that these things are supposed to put on the site plan.
I think it's going quite well.
I mean.
Jeff. We're, we're being asked to be shown drawings and maps, not words.
Open the binder.
I have. Show us the structures, Lloyd.
He, he has, he has. He has sketches and descriptions of all 15 sites in that binder.
I mean, I feel like we could. We could continue. With the completeness review. Or we could shift into a pre-conference or pre-application conference. If.
They've already had that, Lawson.
We've had that already. That's my point.
All right. Well, then maybe we should continue with the completeness review and. My vote would be to mark eight point one dot C incomplete.
Agreed.
Anybody opposed to that? Record, the owner's, record owner's name, address and phone number, applicant's name, address and phone number. I guess we have that. Location of all required building setbacks, yards and buffers. Located on site plan. I don't see any buffering along. The driveway in the site plan.
Yeah, I would mark this as incomplete because we don't see the required building setbacks. On the. West. And east sides of the property. It looks like there's text there that says structure setback to a butter is 25 feet on the north and south. But I don't see that on the east and west.
I don't see it on north and south.
On the site plans as structure setback to a butter is 25 feet. Which.
It's.
Not, not on the binder drawing.
It, it, there's, it's again words as to. It should be shown on this plan where the structure is going.
I think eight point two dot B is incomplete.
Agreed. Mister, Mister Chairman. If I might.
Was that Mr. Bear? Okay.
Yes, yes. As I understand the site plan, you'll see 15 squares. There are 5,000 square feet each. Within which it's our intention to place one of each of those 15 structures that are described in the binder. And I just want to make as much productive use of this time as possible because if we're going to have to revise the site plan, I just would like to know. Would you like us to, within the 5,000 square foot spots that we have, 15 have been marked out there? Locate exactly where the structure would be within the 5,000 square feet?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And which, and which structure will be?
Right. I think that they do run consistently, one through 15. In the, in the narrative, if you will, that Mr. Withan provided. With the, with the spots that are shown on the plan, but if there is any variation, it's, it's, it's not intentional and we'll, we'll correct that, but I think that they're consistent. Thank you.
Names and addresses of all property owners within 500 feet of any and all property boundaries. You've got that list, right, Jesse? You did the list, just like on the one for the Seal Cove Votting Museum.
Yep.
And you found it to be okay. Okay.
Was it, was this the application where we found?
Gathering and.
Sorry.
Mark, a little point of order. Do we specifically have Marjorie?
Recuse herself, yes, yeah.
Okay. It's in the record that she did there.
Yes.
Use herself.
I, I, I said, Marjorie, you need to recuse yourself for this one.
Thank you.
I was just remembering that I think that the first time this came before us, there was a mistake in the butter's list.
Yep.
It was Mr. Kliman, if I remember correctly.
Oh, baby.
Back to butter, yeah, and.
He's on the list now, so that's.
I, I did see his name on the list. I checked, yeah.
Great, all right. Thanks, Jesse.
Yeah.
Sketch map showing general location of a site within the town based on the tax map. We've got that one. Boundaries of all contiguous property under total or partial control of the owner or applicant, regardless of whether all or part is being developed. Shown on plans.
Where's, where's that?
Yeah, wait, you're not showing the piece of property across the road. Jeff. Can't hear you, Jeff. He's doing something wrong. Sorry, Jeff.
Must be his internet.
Maybe he's having internet problems again.
I would say because it says he's unmuted.
Wildly, but I'm not sure what he means.
Maybe we're frozen on his.
Wave it, wave. Can you hear me?
Is that a yes?
That's a yes, I guess. Okay, we just can't hear you. What do we do here? We can continue. I was hoping somebody would answer, but I, I don't see where this has been met.
You're correct. It doesn't have the pointy head across the.
Okay. So. That's a no as well. Unless somebody differs.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you addressing eight point two E?
Yes.
Yes, and do I understand the parcel you're asking about is on the other side of the highway of the 102?
102A, yes, the pointy head.
I guess that, I, I, I'm stuck on the word contiguous and I don't see how it could be contiguous. For, I mean.
Well, I thought, I thought we addressed this before. Jesse, what, what we. Decided on that?
On whether it was contiguous. It's, it's the same law, map and law.
No, you're one of those signs of map and lots. It doesn't make.
Right. No. That's the discussion we had before was whether or not it was a separate map and law.
Jesse, who owns the?
Separate property.
Who, who owns the road in front of the, in that section of the bounty runs in the middle of the road or?
I don't think we have an actual. Survey from them. That shows that.
Well, the, the deed, the deed begins describing the first lot on the easterly sideline of the state highway. So my. My inference from that would be that we don't own the land underneath the state highway.
Correct.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to be quiet. Ed's doing a good job. I, I don't think we showed the land across the street in our last application either.
No.
I do remember us discussing it, but I, I couldn't remember. Decided.
Well, we, we're not building anything over there, so it's. It's sort of superfluous information.
Board members, we okay with that then? That condition's been met? We're complete?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not hearing anything. Okay. Tax map and lot number of the parcel or parcels on which the project is located. Believe we have that. Copy of the deed to the property and option to purchase the property or other document to demonstrate right title or interest. We have that. Name, registration number and seal of the person who prepared the plan if applicable. Jeff has a seal on here.
Correct, thank you.
Evidence of the applicant's technical and financial capability to carry out the project as proposed. We do have the financial. We do have the financial statement from the last time. As well as the project, uh, estimate cost. Which is the last time, right Jeff?
That is correct, thank you.
Zoning classifications shown on existing features plan. Yep.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to go back again and talk about the contiguous lots. And maybe Mister Bear can help me out.
Okay.
When I look at. You know, I'm just reading, you know, lives, I'm not sure, I'm looking at my, well, look at second lot. It looks like it uses the same pin to start describing the second lot. And then exempts out the road section, am I misreading that? Perhaps, perhaps you're not, um, I, I just read the first sentence in the deed and thought that it started on that side of the road and it, and it plainly does up. I will review this, um, if you wanna revisit it, I'm not sure again that has much bearing on the application, but, uh, if, if we need to submit a plan that shows it, we certainly will, I, I don't. Don't have a problem doing that, I will, I'll, I'll read through the second lot description and see if I agree with Mister Young. Then I'd go back to that one and mark it, it's not complete.
Okay, and that is, uh, that's, uh, eight point two E.
I have a question for Ed here on that, that item, if we could sell that lot today without subdivision, Ed, would that? Make it a separate lot, because that would be the case. It's listed as lot one and lot two in the deeds.
Uh, uh, I'm happy to chat with you about that, it doesn't have anything to do with this application though, so let's. I'm trying, I'm still struggling just to read this, this description here. If we wanna sell the lot, maybe we can. Okay, don't wait on me to read this though.
Okay, we're ready to move on then, thank you Ed.
Yeah.
Where was I? Eight point three E?
Sorry, I had to read the deed while you were talking.
Jesse, is that where I was? Location dimensions, L. What's that?
Eight point three B.
B. Oh, flip the page over, there we go. The bearings and length of all property lines to be developed in the source of this information.
I think that's incomplete. Those that we have length, but not bearings.
Jeff, has this property been surveyed?
You, uh, before I answer that, the, uh, bearings are in that deed. And that's where I took the. The bearings for this plan, the plans are drawn to those bearings.
But the property hasn't been surveyed, is that correct?
No, and I don't notice there's any requirement for it.
Just asking.
And I gave the same answer about a year ago, Mark.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there is meets and bounds, bearings and, and lengths, there's also, so what was? What's this satellite image, is that different?
What, a Google Earth image?
There's a Google Earth image with lengths on it.
They're exactly, they should exactly be the same except it's the entire property.
And how is that different from the meets and bounds existing features drawing? From May 29th of last year?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Um, okay, so I'm looking at. Sorry Jeff, um, I've got a Google Earth image that where it looks like you dropped a few pins and have some lengths along those.
Yes, like an overall lot size?
But those lengths. Are different than the.
Site plan?
No, uh, then the meets and bounds drawn, is that, is that what you called it? No, I've lost it on my, my packet. Where'd it go? I was just looking at it. I don't know what's here, cause I was just looking at it, but it's just buried in.
Lawson, I'll, I'll research that if you wanna keep moving.
Sure, okay, like, yeah, let's just mark it as incomplete, um, because I think that the. There are two drawings in, in here that say that the north property line is different lengths, and so there's impossible for us to know. Which one is accurate and neither of them are. Well, I don't know, did you stamp your drawing? Neither of them were done by a surveyor, and so. Um, it's hard to know. If there, you did stamp your drawing that says that it's the north boundary line is 1,693 feet?
Yes, and you can check your deed and that'll match that perfectly.
So then what is the Google Earth image?
It's, it's informational, uh, when we were doing the site walk, I wanted to be able to say to a homeowner how far back their house was. You know, they're 400 feet back from the other one down front. Uh, I think it's a requirement, but if you look at the numbers going around, they're sequential. Lawson, is that correct?
That's confusing, but help, but sort of explains why they don't match up.
Yes, one, one is informational, to locate yourself on the site, are you a thousand feet back or 1,300 feet back, whatever? And the other one is a true meets and bounds that matches the deeds. And I stamped the one that's the true meets and bounds for the deeds. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Lawson, you think that this is, should be found complete then, this?
I think eight point three dot B. Yeah, I mean, Jeff has explained verbally that the source of the information is the deed. And I guess I'm satisfied by that, but it doesn't explicitly say that that's.
Any other board member object? Hearing nothing, we'll move on.
Mark. Can you just go back to eight point three dot A, did you determine that was complete? That was the one that Jeff asked his question in the middle.
Oh, zoning classifications?
Yeah.
It, it doesn't, it's on the. Well, wait a minute, where is it on the plan?
It's on the existing features plan.
Yeah.
Okay, we're okay then.
Okay.
Yes, we, we did say it was complete.
Okay.
Um, location, size of any existing septic and well, culverts and drains, underground tanks. It's on the site plan, Jeff.
Yeah, what is the number, Mark?
Eight point three C.
Eight point three C.
Yeah, so we got. Existing. Septic and well.
Eight point three D, yes, location, size of existing septic tanks and well, uh, yes, the. The, the well, as you know from your site walk, is, is right beside the old end of the south. And the septic, the existing septic system is on the front lawn there.
It's in front of the house?
Yes, towards the water. And.
Is that shown on the site plan?
No, it's on the septic plan that the septic.
It's on the septic plan, okay.
Uh, it's Bill, uh, Bill LaBelle plan. Cause he has to locate that stuff before he can design the new one.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that septic plan is on file.
Okay, folks, are we satisfied with that? Okay, I guess so.
Sorry, sorry Mark, I just was on mute, um. I haven't yet found, although I, I, I believe you Jeff, I just haven't found where the septic, the existing septic is shown.
On the front lawn of the inn.
It doesn't show that on. The septic plan, although maybe I'm looking at the wrong sheet. I'm looking at one that's dated April 9th, 20 and called. Site plan, I don't even know how to refer to this.
Do you see the well there?
Yes.
Okay, so you see the well and. The existing septic system for the inn that we're not going to use is on the front lawn, it's, it's in the, uh. It's in the, uh, marine, uh, fisheries, the, the commercial fisheries zone. So, that's not going to be used, it's really not part of our future plans, we've designed a new one.
But it'll still be used by the house.
It'll be used by the house, but everything else will go to the new system.
Okay, so I'm gonna mark eight, uh, uh, or I propose we mark eight point three dot C incomplete, because it does not show the location or size of the existing septic.
Other board members, are you okay with that?
Yes.
We know, we know Jeff, I think that you're not planning to use it for the campground, but. It does say you're supposed to have it here, the location of any existing septic and well. So, uh, location names and present width of existing streets right away within or adjacent to the proposed development. Are we okay there? We don't have the GOT driveway. Uh, I think we get to address that later on.
Yes, the DOT driveway, there is something on it, um, but what you want there I think is, is formal street names and, uh. The. The GOT subdivision is noted on my site plan and the distance to it is noted on the site plan.
Right, right.
So we should be okay with that one.
Yeah, I think so, anybody else?
Well, um, I'm, I don't know, I'm just looking at this, does, does it show the width of existing streets? Within or adjacent to the proposed development? I don't see where it shows the existing. The location or names of, I mean, even just like. Route one or two A. I guess it's on Tremont Road.
Harbor Drive, I believe.
It's Harvard Drive.
Oh, it's Harvard Drive there?
One oh two A, yeah.
And, uh.
No, you're right, it doesn't have that.
And it doesn't show the present width of. Of those.
Fast Harbor Woods Road.
It does show Fast Harbor Woods, Woods Road, the distance to it, but it doesn't, and then I guess is the right of way. Yeah, the GOT spread away be adjacent to this property?
The GOTs right away for their driveway, you're talking GOT subdivision?
Uh, yes, I was talking the driveway.
Ken Gott, the, the neighbor's driveway.
Yes, um, that showed up on the Google Earth shot that I took and it's, uh. And I measured it this morning, it's 75 feet center of our driveway to center of his driveway.
So I would suggest that we mark this one as incomplete.
I hate to say it gentlemen, but every one of these. I submitted the old for the reason because you already found it complete. So.
We're looking at this as a brand new application, Jeff.
This is a new application, so we wanna look directly at this and not look back as to the prior one, you, you make references.
I.
Excuse me, do not, please don't interrupt. And you make reference to our, our site visit before, I don't want any knowledge computed on me from a prior site visit. Because this is a fresh new application and we may have a new site visit anyway, so let's just treat this as an all new application, not keep referring back to one that's not before us any longer.
Who does that reflect on, Jeff?
I, I, I believe it reflects on you, cause you didn't put everything in here, keep relying on something in the past.
I think it reflects on you, cause you missed it in the first place. Now you're making.
Okay, 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 look, I don't have a gavel here, but if I had one, I'd be using it, okay, let's.
How's that? How's what?
Location, dimensions, elevations of all existing buildings on the site. Gentlemen. Your pleasure.
I'd mark this as complete.
Well, aren't there a whole bunch of little cabins on there, are they on the plans?
Oh, right, those are now existing, right, even though they're non-conforming or not approved, I don't really know what the status of those buildings are, but they're there.
They're there.
They're there.
That's a good point, yeah. Um, they were never approved.
Well, whether approved or not, there's structures that should be shown. Of existing buildings.
I agree.
I didn't miss those when I went on the site visit.
They are shown.
But there are dimensions or elevations of them, Jeff, so.
Yeah, well, there's typical elevations of the cabin shown and they're shown on this, on the center of the 5,000 square foot piece, and that's how I did every one of them. So they're shown. But I consider them, you know. I'll draw that out, but you consider them what you want.
So, the cabin you show in one. Cabin you show in two. And the cabin you show in 11. Are the existing cabins.
Yes.
And that's where they're located right now.
Yes. And the word cabin is beside three of them. Ten will be future.
Folks, what do you think?
Jeff, would you tell me which plan you're looking at with the cabins depicted on it?
I'm looking at the plan, uh, pointy head site plan, Rev 2, July 20, 2020.
Thank you.
July 27th, 2020, I'm sorry.
When, when I driven by the property, I thought those three cabins are slightly to the left of the, the residence when you look up at the property, I mean. Are there two there?
Yes, sir. You might be seeing another piece of the, the buildings that are there, that, there's a, there's a red colored building in the back. And you might be seeing that past the inn. So it's, it's an easy thing to do.
Well, I still don't believe it has the elevations and dimensions reflected on, on the site plan.
Well. I, I would agree with that, they, it would be, uh, in the structural. Platform drawings or cabin drawings. But, um.
Are, are those here?
No, they're, a-again, they're on record.
What do you, I don't know what you mean.
On record.
What's that? Part of the application, Jeff?
Uh. No, they're not part of the application, they're, uh, horizontal location is shown on the site plan. But, um. if, if those cabins stay in those places, then or if you ask for an elevation for the cabins, I would be glad to provide one. And like I said, it's, it's on file, so it's just pulling it out of a file and saying, here you go.
So those three cabins aren't going to be moved. They're going to stay right where they are.
If, if this plan is approved.
It seems like there was one cabin that was sort of to the north of the platform that's not shown on your drawings, but was there last, was it the last spring? I don't even remember when we walked the site, but.
Last summer.
Last summer, yeah.
The cabin that exists on the south boundary is 11, number 11.
Is that its current location?
Yes.
That's the one we asked to look inside and we were denied access.
Right, but I don't think that that's, that's, I don't know, I get anyway, I guess the applicant is saying that that's the location, so we can I would argue that this is not met because the dimensions and elevations are not shown. And so I would mark this as incomplete.
Jeff, you agree with Lawson or?
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
Brett?
Yeah, I do.
Mark that one. Let's go on to the next one. Location and dimensions of existing driveways, parking and loading areas, walkways and sidewalks on or immediately adjacent to the site. So right now you were missing the Ken GOT driveway.
Yes. I submitted a, and Jesse can help you with this. I submitted a Google Earth shot of the front of the property. And you'll see his parking area on that.
Do we have a copy of it?
Yes.
It's in your packet.
It was part of the, part of the application.
Why isn't on the site plan?
The site plan doesn't go over there. It's just he's got a large parking area by his house and it's 75 feet beside the accessway.
You show Mr. Kleiman's driveway.
Yeah, I got Kleiman and I've got Bass Harbor Woods Road.
Right, but the closest to your driveway isn't shown.
I would mark paragraph 8.3.f incomplete. It also does not show dimensions of the driveways, the existing driveways or parking and loading areas. I mean, I think the the GOT driveway is important, but also the existing driveway is also important for us to be able to understand the relationship between the new driveway and the existing driveway. And I don't see how that's, where that's the dimensions are.
You're talking about the driveway coming in, the road coming into the the inn area?
Driveway.
Correct, yeah, the existing driveway and existing parking areas.
And you're saying those aren't shown?
The the dimensions of existing driveways are not shown. That's correct. There's no scale on the, and even scale's not even a dimension. So I would want dimensions that I could see. You know, well, right, and we'll get to the proposed development, but I don't, we don't have enough information to be able to compare the proposed to the existing to understand what it is that how the, how the new parking lot compares to the existing parking lot.
Well, you do because I put a dotted line in for any new parking areas. And that separates
Can you point to that?
Certainly. Do you see in the parking area where there's the number six, the number four and the number five?
Yes.
Did the dotted line emanating for the from the four and dotting, okay? The whole area under six up to the dotted line is existing. And from the dotted line over through the five area and most of the four area is new.
Okay, well, I think I believe you, but I would think that you should revise your drawing to make that clear. It's not clear in the drawing as submitted. Now that you explain it to me, I understand what your, what the conditions are, but the application's incomplete.
I'm really concerned about not being, not having the GOTs driveway on there, Ken GOTs driveway and the dimensions of the road because if I remember, it's pretty, his driveway is very close to there and there's a big concern about light from vehicles entering and exiting and buffering and making sure that we have the right set, correct setbacks for buffering and things like that. So I think you really need to show that as well.
Okay, it's 75 feet over and his parking area comes right to the line. So what you're thinking
Show us, don't tell us, Jeff. Show us, don't tell us, please.
Certainly.
Location of intersecting roads and driveways within 200 feet of site. Once again, no GOT driveway.
Kleiman and Bass Harbor Woods Road.
Yep. So that's incomplete. Location of open drainage courses, wetlands, stone walls, graveyards, fences, stand-up trees and other important features. What do you think, folks?
Are the existing trees indicated anywhere? Dense woods, says dense woods.
That is correct.
Oh, however, within, within all the 5,000 square foot campsites, are trees shown at all on the plans by looking at the right plan?
If you look at the site plan, there's a there's an indicator, there's woods, field, line that's right above the Kleiman driveway notation. Way to your left in the upper left, woods, field, one. And it's a dotted line that travels throughout the site. So everything to the north and east of that dotted line is dense woods and everything that's to the west and south of that is not. Jeff, did that make sense?
Yes. And I'm just thinking through as to trees within the area in the field, there's any trees in the field area, they're going to be affected or not shown.
There are spot trees, yes. And there's some nice specimens and, and they're all gonna remain.
Okay, you, you know, down the road a ways, we're going to be talking about buffering. And so, and so trees that are within the property area that there exists that can aid you in meeting the buffering requirements, I think should be reflected on the site plan. Does that make sense?
It, it does and we're certainly going to build new trees around them. Certainly from the 12, 11, 4, 3, 10 area. They're very nice specimens. I'll give you that.
So I, I think it helps in the review to see where they're located already, so we know how the buffering will fit into that.
Well, that's something that Floyd is going to have to discuss with you and it's in his report.
How about the location of open drainage courses? Oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody? Jeff, were you?
Maybe your report, but I'm trying to look at the site plan to see whether it reflects on the site plan.
No, beyond this dense woods, I have no demarcation for an occasional spot tree.
Which you said are, which you've said are very good specimens.
Yes, they are. And they're going to stay, they're gonna remain.
So I think we should reflect those on the site plan.
I'd agree.
Brett, any objection?
No.
And how about the drainage swale? It's actually, is that a stream, I believe?
No, it's not a stream.
And it's, is it shown on this site plan?
Man-made pasture land drainage swale. The center line is shown and it runs down and goes under the road.
But it starts back much further, doesn't it? If I remember from the sidewalk. Okay, this is incomplete, right?
Right.
Move on. That was
Yes, so I can make it complete. Why was it incomplete?
Just so I can make it complete. Drainage is not accurately shown.
And state of trees, other important features. The direction of existing surface water drainage across the site.
Going.
Shown on stormwater drainage plan.
And it's also on the drainage study and it's also in the drainage report.
I think that this is maybe where we would, I would identify what I think is a discrepancy, although it's unclear because there's, there's no, there's no scale between the stormwater flow drawings on the, let's see, in the application or in the there's, there's a series of one, two, three section flow diagrams.
Yes.
And that seems to not correspond with the stormwater drainage wetlands plan on the date of July 29th.
In what respect?
The topography lines do not seem to align.
That's right. One was, one was physically shot in the field with a level and one was taken from a state flyover. And it's the same document that you used in your analysis by your town engineer. So I wanted to get it in here and use the information that the town engineer did. So I wanted to say, that's what your expert said we should use, we used it.
But it looks like the stormwater drainage wetland plan does not sort of comply or does not align with, so we have two documents and it's unclear which one is accurate. They're both stamped by you.
Yes.
And so I don't, I don't have enough information. The application to me feels contradictory.
The stormwater flow direction and the general topography direction is consistent. If you look at the midsection.
The site plan only So I'm looking at your, the midsection flow.
Yes.
The 6.9 acres at the bottom of it. And it shows the flow going, well, this drawing doesn't have a scale or a north arrow, so it's not super clear, but I can understand that, because I know the site drawing, that it shows drainage going from east to west. I think that's what I'm looking at. Those arrows seem to indicate that it's going from east to west. Whereas your stormwater drainage wetland plan shows it going from south to north. And I'm not, I mean, it's very possible I'm misreading, or I'm sure that I'm misreading the drawing, but
You're, you're
I can
You're misreading the state drawing. It goes the same place. It all flows to the north, northwest from that, in that midsection.
Which, which way is north on this? There's no indication of north, south, east, west on this.
On the pointy head stormwater midsection flow.
Yeah.
There's no north arrow. You've got to sort of overlay the other information onto it. So anyway, I, I think you may have figured it out, Jeff, but it's not clearly shown.
If, if you guys look at the boundary lines on the state drawing and if you look at the boundary lines on the site drawing, they, they overlay perfectly. And you got the long, long north line there.
Wouldn't it help if we had some elevations on a couple of the contours so we know if they're going up or down?
Yes, yeah.
Which contours? I've got them on the site plan contours because I shot them myself.
I'm looking at the stormwater, the one we've been focusing on at the moment, the pointy head stormwater midsection flow.
Yes.
There's no
From the state, from the state drawing or the one that I shot?
Well, it's got your stamp on it. Which one is that? I said, which one is it?
The original one that shows the drainage swale in it is, is mine.
The one that's July 29.
Nine acres at the bottom of it.
Yes, yes.
July 29, 2020 is yours, correct?
That's right. That is correct.
I mean, they're all yours, Jeff. Your stamp's on them.
Right.
But they don't align with each other, which is like, so that's, I mean, that's why we're talking about this as long as we are. I don't think we need to belabor it anymore except identify that it's incomplete.
Why, why is it incomplete?
Because the contour lines shown on the main GeoLibrary two-foot contours do not align with the contour lines shown on the stormwater drainage wetlands plan.
Well, they come from different sources and they're used to create a stormwater plan.
Right, and so as the engineer, we expect you to tell us the truth about what the topography is, not two contradictory sources.
I did originally and I have also gone to your town engineer, which reviewed my study and I also used his topography to do the study. So I've got a study based on my own plan and a study of his. And how do you suppose they came out?
Oh, no, how they
So wait a minute, you submitted two different stormwater plans essentially is what I'm hearing you say.
One is for the study that came off of your town engineer's state topography. And during the last review, a lot was made about the source of the topography. So you had ratified the use of Greg's topography and said that his study was, was closer to being correct than me going out there and doing my own survey. So I used Greg's to do the study this time and they came out very similar.
But you then submitted a drawing that shows something different, which makes us, makes it impossible for us to understand what which one's accurate.
Yeah, it sounds to me like, I understand what you said, you're saying, but basically what you've done, you've given us two plans to look at. Pick one.
They're both correct. One is from the state and one is from Jeff Craft.
I suggest that we move on.
So we're going to make this incomplete.
Yes.
Incomplete.
And I still don't know why.
It was 8.3i, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Jay, the location, front view, dimensions and lighting of existing signs. There are no existing signs. We do know that. Location and dimensions of any easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. I don't think there are any.
Correct.
Indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality for both normal use and fire protection. I don't see that.
What's the number on that? 8.31?
8.311.
Eight, eight, three, I, I mean.
L, L.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's getting late.
That will be, okay, here's another one for you, Mark. That, if you remember, this application is subject to a state approval. And it has been since the, the first one was done. This one is subject to state approval. And they do a well test when they come out here. You remember that subject?
I remember, yes. And we let you get away with it the last time or do that the last time.
So this is subject, this, the sufficiency of the water is due, is determinate on a drawdown curve done in the presence of a state inspector.
And, and, and why is the state inspector not necessary here?
Because there's a permit that's required from the state to license a campground.
But you've told us it's not a campground.
Well, that is true, but I, I, I think that you would like me to go get one. But if, if you say that's no longer requirement, then I got to go talk to the state.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have, as the applicant, we are more than happy to have you continue on. This is, believe it or not, helpful to me, I think, and to others, that we will have to come back, obviously, with a much more homogenized application and go through this process again. I did hear somebody say the hour's drawing late. If it's possible for you, just to give us the briefest of feedback on the remaining items, we'll simply ask that we be given leave to come back again with a new application.
I'm okay with that. Board members, what do you think? Hopefully we can get through fairly.
That sounds pretty good to me. I mean, I think that if we can sort of physically identify the paragraphs that are incomplete.
Mister, Mr. Bear, I, I don't want to leave you with something where you don't know what we're we're saying that we're approving and what we're not approving in this, completing this review.
Understood, understood.
So we're going to say, what do we get to say about the indication of water supply being sufficient?
It's incomplete at this point. I mean, I think that we can waive it in the future, but it's incomplete. There's also no, I don't think, maybe I'm wrong, Jeff, but it would, it would be helpful if you articulated that like, this is your plan and so this is how you're addressing paragraph 8.3 dot L.
I, I said with state inspection.
And where's that?
We're moving along now.
We're moving along. We can't keep discussing, either we're going to adjourn the whole thing from here out or just let's go through a checklist and give them things to look at, but
Estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal together with the location and dimensions of all water supply and wastewater disposal, evidence of their adequacy for the proposed use, including soils test pit data. If onsite sewage is proposed.
We submitted that. 948 gallons per day on the septic HHE 200 form.
Jeff, I'm going to suggest that you don't, that you don't chime in on every paragraph at this point.
Okay, but you, you, you asked me a question just then. Where, what are the gallons? 948 gallons and it's on the HHE 200 form. Does that, does that answer your question, Mark?
I didn't ask a question.
Yeah.
Well, you were reading the paragraph.
Yes, yes. I was asking the question of the board, if they, they thought this, I was asking the question of the board if they thought that we should find that this standard's been met or not.
Well, from my hand with, with with a notation when Jesse put this together, it says onsite plan copy HH2 under plan, comma, no water supply information provided. And I don't, I have inconsistency there, so I don't think it's been met.
Right. Everybody in agreement? Fine, let's go on. The direction of proposed surface water drainage across the site and from the site with assessments of impact on downstream properties. Think we had some problems with that, right Lawson?
Yep, yep. That's essentially the same as paragraph 8.3 dot I's or the existing and the proposed. They're not proposing to change much of the topography, but the same issue comes up.
Provisions for handling solid waste, including hazardous and special waste and location and proposed screening, if any onsite collection or storage facilities. We do see there's a dumpster on the plan and that GOTS is going to pick it up. Was there any screening, Jeff? Quickly, please.
What was the question? Where's the screen?
Yes. Is there screening for the dumpster? Just curious.
Certainly, it'll have fencing around it.
Let's show it.
Show it on the plan then.
Certainly, thank you.
Incomplete. The location, dimensions and materials to be used in the construction of proposed driveways, parking and loading areas and walkways, any changes in traffic flow onto or off-site. On the site plan according to Jesse. I think we're okay here. What do you guys think?
I don't see dimensions.
Dimensions, yes, okay.
You know, it's on our ordinance, that's why, you know, so that we can tell the difference between a six-foot path and 12-foot path.
It's the path. Am I missing the construction material for the roads and parking lots?
Parking lot says three-quarter inch stone.
How about the roads coming, the driveway coming in?
No, it's there.
Currently hot tubbed.
But we don't have those dimensions, so we'll make this not approved.
And it should reflect the condition. I mean, what it consists of.
Yes.
Dimensions and materials.
Yep.
Proposed landscaping and buffering. Would it buffer proposed on plan, buffer plan and description included in pointy head binder? The binder doesn't have, the material in the binder doesn't have any dimensions. No scale. As Mr. Craft pointed out, it's an artistic rendering. And so I don't know how useful an artistic rendering is to us. We need, we need dimensions. We need, we need something more concrete. So how about no? Anybody object to that?
Not at all.
Nope.
Okay. Location, dimensions and ground floor elevations of all proposed buildings or building expansion proposed on the site. Thoughts, please?
We addressed this earlier that we felt that the diagrams in the drawings or whatever they are in the binder don't reflect dimensions and heights and so forth.
So that's a no.
And they do imply, and in fact, I think that both Jeff and Floyd clarified that these are built structures. So they should have dimensions and locations and elevations.
Correct.
Location, that's a no then. Location, front view, materials and dimensions of proposed signs together with a method for securing the sign. So you're not going to have a sign up for it, Jeff.
I'll defer to Floyd on that one.
What's that?
I would defer to Floyd on that one, but if we want to sign, we can come back to the code enforcement office and get a sign.
So the answer is you're not going to have a sign at this point.
I'm not proposing one on the site plan at this point. Doesn't mean the day after approved, I don't go find Jesse and get one, but right now I wouldn't know what it would say and how big it is.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Board members? You okay with this one?
I'm okay with that one.
Okay, location and type of exterior lighting. And I saw descriptions in the binder, but doesn't really show where they're going to go. This says location. So I'm going to say no. Anybody object to that?
No.
Location of all utilities, including fire protection. Underground electric shown on the site plan. Gentlemen, what do you think?
Would you give me one moment to look at that again? I didn't see fire protection laid out.
What do you think?
Is there water shown? There's a septic. Do we see if and how the water is getting from one place to the other or there's the underground, you, underground electric? But I don't know, like, how does water get to the?
We have to identify the water source. If the, if the well passes muster, then it comes in the well. If it doesn't, then it's going to come from a new well that's 150 feet from the service building.
Sounds like you ought to get the well checked first.
Going to do it with the state. I'm not going to do it twice and have the state disavow the well check.
Why can't the state do it first?
It's part of their overall site visit to look at the whole program that's been approved by you guys.
I would mark this incomplete because I don't see where the water lines are going to be running.
We'll never be able to complete it until the state approves the plan.
Then I would recommend you include a letter describing your plan so that we understand what your intention is and we can review that with the application.
There's no reason he can't put in a plan he believes is going to work. And if it does, if the state changes, he can come back to us with the changed plan, so.
I'd be glad to do it that way, Jeff. That's a good idea.
Sounds good to me.
Great.
Good.
A general description of the proposed use or activity. Jeff, you know, it just occurred to me that you say there's going to be a fire pit, a central fire pit. It's not shown on the plan.
The, it's the only one and you didn't believe it last time. But if you believe it this time, it's going to go down very near that dumpster area. There's going to be a greeting and meeting area down near that dumpster and I'll draw it on the plan, but.
Yeah, yeah, include that on the plan, please.
But individual cabins and camps will not have fire pits.
Yep.
And we wanted to make sure you were okay with that.
Okay. Do we like a general description of the proposed use or activity? Sounds good, even though it's not a campground, it's a campground. An estimate of the peak hour and daily traffic to be generated by the project. This is the same traffic study, information you provided before. Whoa, whoa, I'm looking at stormwater. Hold on. Is that correct, Jeff?
Stormwater?
No, no, no. I'm saying the traffic information you provided on the site plan is the same as the one you provided the last time, correct?
Yes.
That's on here, okay. Stormwater calculations, erosion, sedimentation control measures, water quality and where phosphorus export management provisions. If the project requires a stormwater permit from the DEP or if the planning board determines that such information is necessary based upon the scale of the project or the existing conditions in the vicinity of the project.
15 cabins. I mean, 15 sites.
Stormwater calculations, right, guys? We're marking.
We did, yes.
Yeah, we're marking this no then.
Correct.
Lawson?
Yeah, I think that this are correct. I think I would mark this incomplete because of the contradictory drawings.
And finally, approval block. We do have that.
The approved block is dated 2020.
Oh.
That should probably be updated for 2021.
Does that make a difference, Jesse?
I mean, we could probably do it when we sign.
Yeah. If he's updating it, he can update it, but it is.
If you're making a new plan anyway, put a new approval block.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
I'd like to go back again and look at the general description proposed use and activity question. If this is not a campground, is the proposed activity in compliance with this zone, RB zone?
If it's not a campground, what is it?
What, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I, I would mark this as incomplete because I think that the presentation that Floyd and Jeff started off with felt confusing, felt like they were, they're asking us to approve a campground, but then they're describing a use that's not, or they keep insisting that it's not a campground, but I think that it actually sounds like it is. And so I just wanted, I think that the applicant should clarify that. And the, in the application, on the cover sheet of the application, paragraph 11, actually doesn't say campground and it would be helpful to point to a use in our landes ordinance that is permitted in this zone. And I don't think that unique lodging experience is a permitted use. I think it's fine to use that as part of your advertising or marketing, but it's not helpful for us in reviewing the application.
That's a good point. I, I, I struggle with whether this gets close to being a motel or hotel with separate cabins versus a campground. Campgrounds one of the permitted uses we have subject to our approval.
I think that you're, I think that you are really, at this point being a little bit, well, let's just say, we came here to demonstrate to you what our use is and why it isn't a traditional campground. I don't know who put us in this box to begin with, that we were a campground. It seems to me that it's, I mean, when I opened the file, I called it a glamping facility. So I mean, I we're not going to, we're not going to call ourselves something else if a campground is allowed in this district and it's, and these are tents. They're just not tents that people bring in. They're our tents. They're not free, you know, it's not free for all. We have limited spaces, so we have limited people in each space. But I think it's unfair for the board to start characterizing us as a, as a hotel or something of that nature. So I, I think that we've, we've, we've learned from this experience tonight. We will, we'll sharpen this application and we'll be back.
Thank you. Let's go back to that general description because I don't know, do we want to mark it complete or incomplete? I'm fine. It's a campground. Despite whatever they call it is in, in my mind.
I, I, I like the app to say was a campground or not.
Yeah, the application does not say it's a campground, so it should. I would mark it as incomplete at this stage.
Okay. Okay, Brett? He's muted.
Can I make a motion?
Brett was going to say something. I just.
No, I just said it, you know, it makes sense. And I, when he said that at the beginning, my first thought was, okay, is this a subdivision or what is it? But I think, I think if they just should call it a campground and we should proceed under those terms.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll mark that incomplete. It's going to be quite the motion. Yeah, go ahead Lawson.
All right, I make a motion to find the application for the pointy head campground incomplete citing paragraphs 8.1C, 8.2B, 8.2E, 8.3C, 8.3D. eight point three C, eight point three D, eight point three E, eight point three F, eight point three G, eight point three H, eight point three I, eight point three L, eight point four A, eight point four B, eight point four C, eight point four D, eight point four E, eight point four F, eight point four H, eight point four I, eight point four J, eight point four L, and eight point five.
Approval ball. Thought we decided that was okay. You wanna have it updated?
The year was wrong, need updated.
Yeah, I'd like to have it updated.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Jeff? I didn't hear you, sorry.
Jeff seconded.
Okay, okay, great. We have a motion second on the table to find the, uh, uh, site plan review, uh, application from Pointy Head, uh, incomplete, and I'm not gonna go through the list of reasons. Uh, all in favor, Lawson?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four, nothing. Thank you. Hope you folks are clear, uh, Jeff and, uh, and others are clear on what we're asking here. Okay, moving right along.
Mark, before we move along, um, we had suggested that we invite Attorney Pelagi.
Oh. Okay, uh, yeah, that's right, and, um, frankly, Dan, you know, we found the application incomplete. They're gonna have to come back to us again. I'll give you a second here, hold on, um. Would you prefer just to file what you're going to file, you some, in a timely manner this time?
Uh, I, 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 it's already filed, and I would appreciate you bringing it to the board's attention at the next meeting. I, if you give me thirty seconds about one area that you found complete, I wanna make a very short pitch.
Uh, uh, I'm okay with that. Any objection, board members?
No, it's, it's.
Go ahead.
On clock, let's keep rolling.
I, I, I will take less than thirty seconds. Um, eight point three B requires a boundary survey. Um, unless the, uh, conditions on the ground, um, uh, tell you, tell us what the boundaries are. Um, and your ordinance says unless there's sufficient information available to establish on the ground all property boundaries, there's not, there's nothing there, there's no flagging, there's no pin, there's no granite monument. I just asked the board to find that that section incomplete as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, it might be good if you get a survey, Jeff.
Should, should we move to amend?
Okay. Well, what do you think? What's the pleasure of the board here?
I think they heard it. I think there's enough there. I think they're gonna get, come back and have to come back again, and I think when they come back, they are gonna put extra effort into it, and they heard what Mister Pelagi said, and they'll address it.
Yeah, with Brett, but however Jeff Krass shook his head, they wouldn't get a survey, so I'm not sure if this issue may be addressed.
For the, for the record, I would, I would make a motion that we find paragraph, well, I, I guess I would basically make a motion that we advise the applicants to look closely at paragraph eight point three dot B. I don't wanna take Dan's word for it, because I haven't looked at the ordinance exactly, but recommend that you come back with a good, good suggestion.
Hold on, let's give Mister Bear a quick chance, quick chance to respond to Mister Pelagi.
I, I don't, I don't have any response to that. I've gotta study this a little bit more. I, um, I, I, I think that Mister Witham has, uh, probably accurately described the position that we're in, and, um, we'll, we'll take everything that we've heard and put what Mister Pelagi says under advisement.
Thank you.
Because next time we come back, we hope we check the boxes, so. Thank you.
So, well, board members, do we wanna amend this or not?
I, I think we should amend it.
Go for it, Jeff.
Well, if, if, if you're, if you're about to impose upon us a, a requirement for a survey, I think we do need to look more carefully at the standard in the site plan review ordinance, because it says, the planning board may waive the requirement of a boundary survey when sufficient information is available. That's for you to decide whether there's sufficient information available on the ground. Um, so, I mean, it, I, I don't think that it's a, it's a default that we have to do a survey as, as may have been presented. Not saying that we won't, I just, I, I, I think that I, I don't think that you should make that call at this time.
I think it's getting late, we need to think about it.
I, I, I think we do not pass on this one and leave it when they come back to law of rest, not say it been met. Leave it as an open issue.
Can can you show me in the ordinance where we actually require a survey? That's, that's my issue.
I can. I can if the board wants to hear from me.
Make it quick, please. Where is it?
Uh, this is Dan Pelagi, uh, eight point three B.
Hold on, in site, site plan?
In site play, uh, site plan review ordinance, eight point three B, and I will read it to the board. The bearings and length of all property lines of the property to be, to be developed and the source of this information. The planning board may waive this requirement of a boundary survey when sufficient information is available to establish on the ground all property boundaries.
And you're arguing there's not sufficient information?
On the ground.
Yeah. And you're interpreting on the ground to mean actual markers?
Correct, or flagging, or, you know, something that shows the boundary. The reason it's coming up is because, um, one of these sites is in, we believe in Mister Kaufman's backyard.
Right, right. I mean, I, I'm concerned that we have accurate setbacks as well.
Yep.
From all the property lines, so.
Well, go ahead, Jeff. Enough questions here that we don't have enough information in the application to review it, it sounds like.
We can, we can say it's not been met, the next meeting conclude that, okay, what we've been looking at has been met, and let the applicant decide whether they wanna come back with or without the survey. Convinces it's not needed, or, 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 um, then we can waive it at that time, but it leaves it open for us to look at again. And at this hour of the evening, I think it's a reasonable answer.
Sounds good to me. Make that motion, please.
Um, which A?
Eight point three dot B. I'll go for it, Jeff. I move that we, um, that we, uh, find, um, eight point three dot B, the, the condition for a bearing as a length to be unmet at this time, incomplete.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second on the table to find, uh, that standard incomplete, uh, I won't repeat it this late. Uh, all in favor, Brett?
Sure, yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sports zero on that, okay. Are we done with this? Jesse, you've, uh, you're, you've completed, uh, C E O issues part of the night, right?
Yep.
Okay, uh, unless somebody has anything else, uh, to add, uh, we could set the date for the next meeting. That's, uh, that's the resumption of the public hearing on the other campground application, correct?
Didn't we already set that meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
We did.
But do we set it again?
You just confirm it.
I move that we confirm the date of our next meeting to be, uh, Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, at five P M by a Zoom.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion second on the table to, uh, have, uh, resume our public hearing on the Acadian Wilderness, uh, Lodge Campground, uh, to five o'clock, May twenty-fifth, at, uh, by Zoom. All in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please. Thanks, everybody for being here tonight. Have a second? Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
You're, you're still awake, Marjorie.
Take, take the vote.
Okay. Okay, Brett, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Marjorie?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, folks.